Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
This is the Windham North Supervisor Union Board about to come to order in the Library of Bellas Hall Union High School, a beautiful school. And I'm going to just check and make sure Fact TV is ready. Fact TV, are you ready?
Yeah, I guess there's not that big of a crowd. But if you do come up to stand where the white bag is right there in the middle so we can get a good panel on it, give you a picture on it. Thank you.
White bag? Great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Adjustments to the agenda. Priscilla Lambert, you're looking for an adjustment which I believe you're going to call 4D, although I will urge the board to consider it as a discussion item this time and warn it for action at our next meeting, which will be on the 22nd, I think it is. Is that right? Go ahead, Priscilla.
David, I'd like it open to the, if the board decides they want to take action tonight, they could. So I would like that to fall there as an action, a discussion.
Get out.
Not want to, but I'm going to get you up to the board.
Okay. When we get there, what I'm going to propose we do is the chair will rule that it's a discussion act, but I will invite the board to consider overruling it as per Priscilla's request.
No.
Preference not to take action have not had sufficient public warning, but when we get there, we'll find out where we're going to go. Okay.
David, I have another thing.
Oh, you have another? Sure.
I guess, do we want to discuss the ESER funds or will we have a special meeting to do that?
Well, Priscilla, I am going to say that we will be able to spend a fair amount of time with the ESER question at our next meeting. Now, if we find out that that meeting is going to start to get heavy, then we will in fact, let's put it this way, I would like to hold a special meeting on ESER which would precede that one. We can keep the agenda light for the regular meeting, which is the 22nd, I believe, to Wednesday. Then that's what we'll do. Deb, did you have help for me?
No, you got it.
Okay.
Is that too close to the deadlines we're getting in requests?
We are not urgently under deadlines. This is something which has trickled out during the course of the meeting. In fact, if we end up appointing a superintendent tonight, perhaps he'll be able to speak that just a little bit, what the deadlines actually look like. Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda before we dig in here? Okay. It says Communication Public Comment. Anybody in the room with Communication Public Comment? Anybody at home with Communication Public Comment? I'm going to sit down and Ricky, if you can track it, do I have any hands because I have difficulty taking in the whole screen.
One hand from iPhone.
You have a hand from iPhone. That individual, I would appreciate if you would identify yourself for the minutes. You are recognized. We need some audio.
There we go.
Thank you.
I am Alicia Beebe, mom to a fifth grader at the middle school. And I just wanted to make a comment that I was quite disappointed in how communication was, or the lack of communication with the school for incoming fifth graders. We are fairly new to town, haven't really been here about six years. Unfamiliar with any school other than CES. So imagine our anxiety dropping off our son Tuesday morning, not knowing who his advisor was. I didn't even know what time school started. I had to ask another parent through Facebook. And I didn't know who his advisor was. I knew essentially nothing about what he was walking into. And on top of that, he came home and gave me some disturbing news. I have reached out to the principal, have not heard a response, that fifth graders are eating in their laps in the auditorium. There's pushing and shoving in the lunch line. He will never get school lunch because he's too intimidating. There was no snack available. Now, mind you, he's a 10-year-old, eats breakfast at 7:30, gets to school at 8:00. His first period is PE and he doesn't eat lunch until 12:47. That's five hours between meals and physical exertion for an entire period. So there's lots of questions that I have that seem to have gone unanswered by the school principal. And I just wanted to make the board aware of our concerns. And I really do hope that I get a response from somebody soon.
Alicia, thank you. I just want to make a very brief comment that while we're under Communication Public Comment, it's not actually a dialogue. However, I think I should explain to you that this is a meeting of the Windham Northeast Supervisor Union Board, which is made up of representatives of the three districts, Rockingham, where your son goes, the Athens Grafton Joint Contract Board. In fact, on my left is Priscilla Lambert, who is your rock chair. On my right is Jack Brier, who's your union elementary district. And I think Molly Bannock here, who is high school. There's Molly down on the end of the table. So your chairs are here. Your questions are best addressed, of course, to Rockingham Board, but we have at least two members of Rockingham Board here tonight. So I think that your concerns have been heard and I thank you very much for bringing them up. Okay. Do we have anyone else? Oh, you're welcome. Do we have anyone else here under Communication Public Comment, Ricky? I don't see any other hands. Okay. Well, that gets us down to...
David, you need to make a quick call first because I don't know if he's...
Oh, well, fair enough. Fair enough. Okay. In the Zoom, I have Deb Wright. Is there anyone else in the Zoom who is a member of the WNESU Board and/or a voting member of the WNESU Board?
I'm here, David.
Okay, Jessa, I got you. Thank you for that.
How about Jason Benson?
Jason Benson? Is he there?
He just said he was here.
Jason is...
Jason is appointed for our...
Okay, Jason Benson, Jason Terry. We have, for Union Elementary, we have Lynn Morgan, Jack Brier, and Jessa West Clark. For the high school, we have Deb Wright, Brenda Farkas on my left, no, that's my left, on my right, next to Jack Brier. And I am also a member of the Union High School Board. So I think that we have a full complement tonight. And oh, thank you, Jack points out that I should recognize also Cheryl Charles, who is here in an ex officio capacity on behalf of Westminster School Board, which will become a full-fledged school board. You helped me here. It's on July 1st, 2022. Is that right, Cheryl?
Correct, unless something happens here.
We're hoping that maybe we get expeditions by the SVE on that matter. Okay. That's your membership. I'll point out also that at the table here, we have Molly Bannock, who is, as I said before, the high school chair. Molly's a member of the board, just not in a voting capacity tonight. And also Elise Manning, who I believe is a Westminster rep. And it would be helpful, Elise, and then Melissa, if you can make brief introductions so that our audience, which is mostly on the Zoom tonight, knows who you are and what you do.
Hi, I'm Elise Manning Sterling, and I represent Westminster on the Merge School, Athens Grafton Westminster School Board.
And I'm Melissa Carlstrom, and I do the same thing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Did you mention Lynn Morgan?
I think I got Lynn. I have her on my list anyway.
All good.
All right. We appear to be through Communication Public Comment, unless there are any late break in Communications and Comments, Ricky, are there? Okay. That brings us down to New Business for Discussion and Action. And I would like to have a motion to accept the resignation of the Assistant Superintendent of Schools Lynn Carey, which will be, I've got my order flipped here, but there are no objections, to act on the resignation of the Assistant Superintendent of Schools Lynn Carey effective October 1st. Give a motion, please. Jack has a motion. Okay. We operate under Robert's Rules for Small Boards, so I'm not looking for a second. Is there discussion of the resignation? Okay. Cheryl Charles.
I may have missed this, David, but you just switched the order on the agenda.
Inadvertently.
Oh, okay. So that inconsistent with the agenda, but the first item is to accept the resignation of the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Lynn Carey.
If de facto became that, however, if the board would like to revert to the original order, we can certainly act on the superintendent's resignation first. And in that case...
Why is it ringing in my ear?
What's that, Deb?
Sorry about that. Volume was on. I was just trying to put in my earbud. Thank you.
Is there objection from the board about reversing Item A and Item B? A is the resignation of the superintendent, and B is the resignation of the assistant superintendent. Priscilla, have your hand.
Are there items under that that should be discussed in executive session prior to taking a vote on that?
Well, it's my belief, Priscilla, that we're here to accept those resignations. It's a formality, but I think that we need to take action because this is a public body and these are resignations from a couple of public officials. All right. I'm not hearing any objection to the reversed order of considering resignations. And is there any additional discussion before I go to a vote? All right then.
Yeah, David, I don't have...
Yes, Priscilla.
I do not feel that we've had enough information to be able to act on them because they were at our last meeting. I took it down because I'm told like no one can hear me. I just feel that the board has been kept in the dark and we just don't know, you know, why or any of that. So to act on a resignation without, normally they come and they at least speak to us and let us know.
Well, Priscilla, it seems to me that they did come and speak to us last week and both indicated they were resigning.
Lynn didn't say anything, so I don't know what basis for it was or anything else.
Mr. Brier.
Do we have a letter from Ms. Carey? Because I believe that unless there is a reason to question whether someone was being resigning under duress, that these texts of a resignation really is all that's required here. We are acting, we have a written letter of resignation, and the question becomes one of do we accept it or do we not? If we vote not to, then perhaps that would necessitate a discussion, an executive session. But right now, this is the public statement of a person resigning. And normally, I have a sort of a sense of decency to the person involved. If you don't cross-examine them in a public setting about the reasons for it, we decide it's something we wish to do to accept or not.
That's why I said, David, that it needed to be an executive session if we were going to talk about it.
Well, Priscilla, I go back to what I said earlier, is that we have received resignation letters from both administrators. And I believe that if they wanted to talk about it, they would be here to talk about it. Lynn Carey is in the chat. Lynn, is there anything you want to add to your resignation? Pardon me, in the Zoom, not in the chat. Lynn's in the Zoom. Yes, Lynn.
Yeah, I, you know, it's really not far from what you said. Chris and I were a team, and I just, I just feel going on without him is too much. But we can certainly discuss that in executive, as well as any other things that the board wants to know in executive session. I'm going to be Gary.
Well, Lynn, we have on our agenda an executive session if needed. It was, actually, it is actually Item 6A. So if you're requesting that we go into executive session to discuss your resignation, we can certainly do that. If in fact, Mr. Brier wishes to withdraw his motion.
Well, I guess I'd first ask Ms. Carey if she believes that we should talk about whatever she'd like to talk about. And if she believes that would make a material difference in the vote, because if she does, then I think that would be proper to have her speak. Otherwise, I would suggest that we accept her resignation. I mean, if she doesn't want, if she doesn't want us to, we certainly can, we can go to the executive session and discuss that because that'd be something I'd actually be interested in.
What's your pleasure, Lynn?
Point of order, David. I think she's requested an executive session, and I don't think, I think we should listen to her.
Lynn, let me just, as per Cheryl's suggestion, do you wish to have an executive session to discuss your resignation prior to, prior to the board taking action on it?
I would like to just have a few minutes in private. I think the board deserves that, and I think all the people that Chris and I, I have worked for so hard over these years, you know, I wouldn't mind talking to the board.
Okay. Well, Jack, if you can withdraw your motion at this time, I think we can accommodate Lynn's request.
Then I will, Mr. Chair, I will withdraw my motion to accept the resignation of Lynn Carey and instead move that we go into executive session.
Well, hold on, hold on a minute, Jack. Here, a minute, Jack. I'm going to ask that we get through the rest of the open portion of our agenda, which is quite brief, and then we can go into executive session, have that discussion with Lynn, and come out and take action.
That'd be acceptable.
Okay, thank you. All right. Six, pardon me, 4A, Act on Resignation of Superintendent of Schools.
David, point of order. If we're going to hear her, we need to listen to that before we act.
I don't think so. There are two different items on, Priscilla, there are two different items on this agenda. And we have a 4A, which is to act on the resignation of the superintendent of schools. And we have a 4B, which is to act on the resignation of the assistant superintendent of schools. Those are two entirely separate agenda items. So I strongly believe that this board is in a position to act on the resignation of the superintendent of schools. Okay? And I would like to have a motion to accept the resignation of the superintendent of schools effective on September 27th. Give a motion, please. Heaven's merciful gracious. Thank you, Jack. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the resignation of the superintendent of schools. Is there discussion?
David.
Deb.
I've had my hand up for a while. It was no accident. So since you've reversed the, basically reversed the order to the original agenda item, I'd like to have a couple of questions. Number one, and I've been asking this for several days, where is Chris Pratt? That's one. And it really needs to be answered because he's here till the 27th, but he's not here. That's number one. And number two, since the public asked so adamantly last at the executive committee meeting, I'd like to know what has been done to try and save the superintendent and/or assistant and/or assistant superintendent's position? The public has asked that question, has not been answered. So those are two separate questions. I'd like them to be answered.
Deb, I can answer at least one of those questions for you right now. I have a letter which is dated September 8th, and it says, Dear David and WNESU Board Members, sorry I could not be there tonight in person as I still don't have a voice. So I figured I would send you this correspondence to support Mr. Haas to take over as interim superintendent of schools for the 21-22 school year in WNESU. I write this letter of support for Mr. Haas with mixed emotions, as I wish the circumstances would have been different. As you know, I have worked with Mr. Haas for the past three years, as he has served as the Director of Student Services for WNESU. During this time working with Mr. Haas, I have come to know him as someone who cares a great deal about his profession, and he's expressed that he would like to be a superintendent of schools someday. I also believe that at this time, Mr. Haas is the best candidate for the job, and both the board and Mr. Haas will benefit and learn from each other over the next year. I would like to give him my endorsement for superintendent of WNESU for the 21-22 school year.
David, that doesn't answer my questions.
Well, I just answered the question of where Chris is tonight.
No, no. I asked the question that I have been asking for several days. Where is Mr. Pratt? I have been asking since I saw written documentation by Mr. Haas on the same letterhead that Chris Pratt superintendent uses. And I have also had the voice, of course, I get the voice thing with the robocalls, but I'm very disturbed that Mr. Pratt has another 19 days as of today and have not seen him in person and do not know at this point whether or not he is acting in his position or if he has left the school for illness or vacation time, whatever he's using before his resignation date. I want that answered. That's what I continue to ask, and I'm not the only person who's asked. I'm just the one who's the most persistent.
I believe that Jack Brier might be willing to speak to your question, Deb. Am I correct, Jack?
I did have a phone conversation with Chris. At the time, he was at home. He is still, he is still the titular superintendent because his resignation puts that in place. I would imagine, depending on what the board's actions are tonight, there might be some accommodation if he wanted to have an earlier finish date, but that's a discussion that has to happen later. We, I did discuss the concern that many expressed and expressed the love that many people in this community have for Chris. And my takeaway, I didn't, I didn't bring those notes. I brought other notes tonight. But my takeaway from that was that he believes that his health issues are of major consideration and frankly, in the final analysis, this is something he's debated for many months now and finally cut to the point where he felt that this had to be the time. And I know that there's some medical stuff that I don't think's proper to get into that made me feel that we ought to give the man his separation and honor his request.
Chris is actually on the, is a member of the audience, and his hand is up.
Oh, good. Thank you. That was wonderful. You're recognized, sir. Yes.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry I can't be with you tonight. I'm still feeling a bit under the weather. To answer Mrs. Wright's question, I am taking the time that I have currently right now. I've been answering emails from home and doing my duty as a superintendent as much as possible, even though I've submitted for sick time and it's, so that's where I am right now, my home tonight. I do, so put my recommendation for Mr. Haas as superintendent effective immediately so he could have time to transition into the position. I spoke to him. I'm more than willing to help with the transition. I expressed that to Mr. Clark and Mr. Brier as well. So currently, yes, I am fulfilling my duties, although I'm on sick leave. I am in touch with my office, and so I hope that answers the question.
Deb, is that a satisfactory response?
It does make me understand Mr. Pratt, but I had a second question, and that is to the board. What, these are not just pieces of paper we're shuffling off to Buffalo here. These are two important positions, and the public was very concerned, staff was very concerned. We saw that last week. And I'd like to know what, if anything, is being done, since apparently Mr. Brier and Mr. Clark have had multiple conversations that the board has not been privy to, to understand if we are doing anything to save either one of those positions. I'd like, that's an answer for the board, for Mr. Clark and Mr. Brier, apparently, because no one else knows the answer to that.
Jack Brier, you are recognized, and I'm going to recognize Priscilla Lambert.
With your indulgence, the, I had, I'd called or attempted to call virtually all the members of the executive committee who are the, who have the titular responsibility for hiring and firing of superintendents. And I was able to get ahold of everybody but one person, and we talked this evening because she was out. And to let them know what was going on and to get feedback from all of them, and most of them were more than willing to share feedback. And so I, the, the way that it was left was Molly was going to try to reach, Chris was not able to do so. I did reach Chris, had the conversation that I described to you. I believe Mr. Clark had one in his capacity as SU chair, and that was, and certainly other members. I think actually, Priscilla, you also spoke to him? Is that correct? Well, my point simply is that, again, the bulk of the executive committee have had conversations with Chris, and I think there was, you know, or at least attempted to have them. And so we're simply reporting back to you what we learned, and Chris has confirmed the essence of that conversation. And again, you know, these are always delicate things. You want to, you want to, you want to both be very open, but I, but I, you also have to be very protective of people's individual privacy. The, that's really, that's really an essential thing. And while the public does have a right to know that these steps are being taken, past a certain point, it's provocative and not in a way that is fair to the staffers that are involved, who have served us long and well and hard to the best of their ability. And I think that's why it's proper to move forward, yea or nay, with the acceptance resolution that's before us and is on, is what we're talking about.
Priscilla Lambert.
I spoke to Chris in my capacity as a board chair, asking a question that my board members had asked me to ask as the only thing. I did at the end of the conversation make one comment, and that was that I would like him to change his mind on that. And he thanked me, and that was the end of the conversation. I would love to hear from him in executive session to see what he would like to tell us as a board, because I don't think we've had that opportunity. We have only had him in open session at an executive committee meeting, and I don't think he's been given that opportunity to answer or even to let us know. And with his voice being, you know, difficult, it's a little stronger today than it was yesterday, but with it that way, yeah. But I think we... yesterday, but with it that way, yeah, but I think we, as a board, need to hear, rather than Jack and you, David, going out by yourselves and coming up with something that the board hasn't authorized as a solution. I think we need to look at solutions together as a board and function as a board.
Hold on a minute. I do have another hand here, and I'll come back to you here very shortly. Wait a minute, was it your hand, Ricky?
It was my hand, Superintendent Pratt has his hand.
Oh, Superintendent Pratt.
I had my hand up like four times.
Molly, I apologize to you. Chris, with your leave, I'm going to recognize Molly and come back to you. Go ahead, Molly, please.
So, I have a suggestion. I don't, you know, I think that some of us are very passionate about what's going on here and, you know, wish there was some magical thing that we could save Mr. Pratt, but I do believe that he needs a change, needs some time to get healthy again. And, but what I want to know, and I haven't heard yet, is, and I would hope that maybe it would be the executive board that would do it, do an exiting interview. You know, a real, just, you know, hopefully a face-to-face, you know, we've accepted your resignation, let's be honest with each other, what can we do better so this doesn't happen? You know, maybe that's going to be uncomfortable for everyone in the room, or several people in the room, but it's, you know, when I lose an employee that works for me, I always put myself through this process because I always think, what did I do wrong? How did I lose this employee? What, you know, where did I go wrong? Because I take ownership of that person, you know, their family. So I would, I would really like to see something, just a real, you know, nothing, nothing but us in a room, and try to get some real meat out of it so that it doesn't happen again. Did we go wrong? I'm sorry, nobody wants to hear it, but when you lose an employee, there's, there's a two sides to it. I'm not trying to get into the nitty-gritty, I don't want us on the front page of Bradbury Reformers, but for us to do a better job for whomever has this job next time is going to be very important to me.
Chris, if you're still in the room, you've had now two requests. You've had an inquiry from Priscilla Lambert if you would like to address the board in executive session. You've also had an inquiry from Molly Pratt if you would be willing to do it. Molly Pratt, never helped me. Molly Bannon, as to whether you would be willing to do an exit interview with the executive committee, which are the board chairs of the four boards. So, Chris, what can you tell us?
Okay, so I'll answer Priscilla's question first. In regards to going into executive session, I don't, you know, I don't feel that's necessary. I think Jack and David did a very good job of relaying on to what needs to be said. Like I said at the last board meeting, I'm resigning for personal reasons, and it based my decision based on what's best for myself and my family at this time. And I really don't want to go into any more detail than that, you know, I don't need to. It just, it's, I'm standing my ground on for personal reasons, and that's it. As far as Molly, you know, Molly's request, we've been doing exit interviews for all employees as they leave, including myself. Joel and HR sent me an exit interview, I filled that out with, earlier today, but no, I don't feel the need to go into executive session. I think I've stated over and over again to the, some of the various board chairs, and at the last meeting I stood up to it as well, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. All right. I need some, do I, do I have another hand?
Jessa.
Oh, Jessa, please. You're recognized.
I just wanted to somewhat echo Molly's comment that they've announced they're leaving. The time for us to act upon that was long before it happened. Deb, you're an employer, you know, when somebody says they're leaving, it's, it means you've screwed up somewhere, especially if they were good employees that you really liked. And much like it did for most of the board, it kind of hit us out of the blue. That is, we've screwed up already, months ago, to be hit with this suddenly. So that is on the board, not on the employee that's leaving. And I would like us to consider, at some point before the next meeting, to talk about an exit, not even an exit, a temporary procedure to allow individuals working at any level to have their say outside of the chain of command, because clearly we have a serious communication problem.
Thank you, Jessa. Anything else? Okay, we're back to consideration of a motion to act on the resignation of the superintendent of schools effective September 27th. And, can I get a motion on that?
You did.
Okay, I have the motion from Jack Breyer. Additional discussion under the motion.
There was a question.
All right then, I'm not hearing any, and you wish to move the question, Mr. Breyer? Okay, I'm going to roll call it. Jason Benson, how do you vote?
It's his choice, his desires. Yes.
Okay. Jason Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Priscilla Lambert, how do you vote? Priscilla?
I recognize his need to do this, but I am against his resigning, so I guess I'm going to go ahead and vote no.
Okay. Lynn Morgan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jack Breyer?
Yes.
Jessa West Clark?
I regretfully accept his resignation, yes.
Okay.
You forgot Brenda.
That's right. Brenda Farkas?
Yes.
Deb Wright? Okay, we have accepted the resignation of Chris Pratt as superintendent of schools. We have here an item called Consideration of Appointment of Andrew Haas as Interim Superintendent of Schools. A motion would be to appoint Andy Haas effectively immediate, effective immediately, and direct the chair to negotiate salary on behalf of the board.
David?
Yes, Priscilla?
I would make a motion that we consult with the AOE, and as well as that, the board interview any current employees in our district who hold a qualifying superintendent's license or are eligible to be, hold a license before making a decision that has so much impact on our children and families.
I'm going to rule your amendment out of order because I don't believe it is germane to the amendment. Now, I realize, I realize that there may, hold on a minute here, Priscilla. Priscilla, I am going to ask the board if it wishes to overrule the chair, so I'm going to roll call it. I'm simply going to point out that we have clear direction from the retiring superintendent of schools as to what his preference is. Okay. Mr. Breyer, do you wish to sustain the objection?
No.
Okay. Lynn Morgan, do you wish to sustain the objection?
No.
You're a no, Lynn?
No.
Okay. Jack Breyer, do you wish to sustain the?
No.
Jack, do you wish to sustain the objection?
Oh, I said no.
Okay, thank you. Brenda, do you wish to sustain the objection?
I don't know how to answer because.
Well, be yes or no, or an abstention.
I think it's abstention because I don't exactly know the details of what's going on, how it's going to be.
I will note you as an abstention. Deb Wright, do you wish to sustain the objection?
Sustain your objection?
Sustain Priscilla Lambert's objection.
Oh, yes.
Jason Terry, do you wish to sustain the, sustain the objection?
Yes.
Jason Benson, do you wish to sustain the objection?
Yes.
Priscilla Lambert, do you wish to sustain her objection? I guess you're a yes. All right, let's read them off. I have one, two, three.
You forgot me.
Jessa.
Oh, Jessa, I'm sorry, done it to you again. Jessa, do you wish to abstain the objection?
Sustain, and yeah, I agree with Priscilla, yes.
So you are a yes. I have one, two, three, four, five, yes. I have one, two, three, no. So the objection is sustained, we are not acting on the, we are not acting on the appointment of Andrew Haas as an interim superintendent of schools. Mr. Breyer?
We're acting on this new, this new amendment, and I'm one, this new version of it, if I'm understanding that correctly, and I'm wondering if Priscilla would mind reading out the motion that we're now acting on, or I guess we're considering, because we have a separate vote on that.
I made a motion that we consult with the AOE and as well as the board, I made a motion that we consult with the AOE as well as having the board interview any current employees in our district who hold a qualifying superintendent's license or are eligible to become superintendent before making a decision that has so much impact on our children and families.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, discussion. Priscilla, would you like to speak to your motion?
I know of at least two principals in our districts that are eligible, and there may be other people that are eligible, and they were not even considered in this, these actions. Instead, David, you and Jack have gone without a discussion of the board to come up with your plan, but you didn't let the board look at what might be possible out there and what else could be done. And I just think that we should take a few, just a few days to do that before we act on something that is so important to all of us, rather than just quickly making a decision like this, where, you know, we're kind of thrown into the mix and not allowed to do that.
Priscilla, I'm going to ask you, if you can amplify a little bit your discussion of your motion here, how do you intend to go about that?
I think we need to, part of the process is that you advertise. We could do that by tomorrow, we could have it out there, I'm sure it's going to be in the press anyway. We could have advertised, we could have people send their stuff in, we could certainly do this within a week. It's not something that's going to take us that long. We just look at who's available in our districts, who might be able to fill that position and do a really good job. I know if I were qualified and you took somebody who doesn't have a license over me, I would be really disturbed. And I think that's what we're doing here without giving these people the opportunity to interview for. It's important to our parents, it's important to our teachers, it's important to everybody in our districts that we look at the whole picture and not just go with something that you and Jack have come up with without having a discussion with us beforehand. Let us function as a board, Jack. Right, Jack? David? Jack's got his hand up behind his head.
Now, I have that hand up, Jack, but I'm going to ask Priscilla if she can give us a specific timeline for action. Can you give us a specific timeline for action? Because I think we're going to obviously need to warn another meeting of this board, or we can get a forum for the board table.
I think we should probably be able to do that in the interview by next, next week. I don't think, you know, I think we should be able to have all of that stuff ready and be able to call those people in to interview them as a board and look at, look at that. And I really think it should be a board decision as important as this is, not guys getting together behind the scenes and coming up with something.
Okay, Mr. Breyer?
Yeah, I just want something to be stated for the public record. The first point that everyone should know is that I sent out an email following the meeting that we had that went so, in such an interesting fashion. And I said that board members would need to begin fact gathering, and that was, that's, it's in that note, and said that for my part, I was going to make some phone calls. David had done the same thing. We did have a recommendation from multiple members of the staff that Mr. Haas be considered as acting if not, if not interim, because there was a gap, there were documents that needed to be signed, that there was pressing, there was a pressing requirement to have somebody with signatory authority now. So with that, those two pieces of data, that we had a recommendation for Mr. Haas from staff, including the currency from Tampa, we said, in the note, I said in the note, we would talk to Mr. Haas, and I would, and that we would talk to other staff members. That was sent to you, that was sent to all folks. And now, just now, let me, please let me finish because this is important.
Actually, he's strictly speaking, he's talking to the chair because that's protocol.
Right, and thank you for that. The, the second note, and I'm going to read a little excerpts of it, what is the transcript of the discussion with Mr. Haas? Let me touch on these, again, board chair's got this. Notes from discussion with A. Haas. We will, one, we will need to put together a way out of recommended transition steps. Immediate steps need to be clear. What do we need? We need permission of the board. We are merely acting in a fact gathering and recommendations mode. Staffing transition, boards need to be on board with recommendations. They own this determination. You all have this. Need status to determine how, outlined and can't cheat of next steps. Provisional license is essential if we're, if we're to make this recommendation. Follow-up note was with Dan French, which we won't get into. Process, I do, to you, process, how this should be brought forward. We must all emphasize that all David Clark has done in his capacity is meeting prep, not acting beyond any mandate, we are dealing with the exigencies of the moment. To expedite, let's encourage all members of all boards to attend this evening's meeting, which is why many, many of our folks are here tonight, but want to make sure that we have broad support and resolution of SU Board. Process, one-on-one calls with all board chairs by David Clark or Jack Breyer. Role of boards needs to be emphasized. Executive board chooses superintendent. May need follow-up emergency board, E-Board? Not clear. SU Board, Service Bureau and with ownership of Special Ed, and coordination of discussions between boards per the articles under which this supervisory union is structured. I make these points because I want to be clear, there was no background conspiracy, the process was open, I stayed here rather than go down to the Cape this weekend specifically so I could make certain that board members were informed, made sure that everybody got phone calls, several people got as many as seven to try to figure out where they were, sent emails out. We have tried our level best to make certain that everyone was looped in, that no one felt that any member of this SU Board or any members of the Executive Committee were acting beyond the scope of gathering information and preparing to make recommendations so that this board and the executive board and preparing to make recommendations so that this board and the executive board have something to work with. That's what we have done. And I just make no apologies for it. I think it was a good plan because otherwise this meeting would be a chaotic mess.
Okay, I have several hands up. I'm going to recognize Jessa West Clark and then Deb Wright and you as well, Melissa, by leaving the SU Board, of course, and then finally, Priscilla. So Jessa, you're on.
Hi. So tonight I found myself agreeing with Priscilla, perhaps for different reasons though. I am, well, somewhat unfamiliar with the process Jack has mentioned. I don't think I received all those phone calls. I did receive some email, but I didn't treat them as a dialogue. The, we have a superintendent and, you know, the legal signatories that we need for some time going forward. One of the things that hasn't been addressed is this year more than ever is going to be our greatest special ed population. We have a lot of kids that have needs that developed over the pandemic. I haven't seen the plans to address that if Andy Haas was to be moved to interim superintendent. And I've had a few people reach out to me with concerns about the special ed and even the regular ed paras if Andy was to move in that role and the hole he would leave behind. I think we need to take a week. I think you guys have done a good thing, but we need to take a little bit of time and really think about what we want to do for an interim role if we want to bring in an outside consultant. And I do understand that telling an employee that you're more valuable where you are as opposed to advancing to a new position is sort of a dangerous stance if you want them to stay. But for the next 10 days, I would really like to follow Priscilla's recommendation, open it up. One of the things we noted is that there is actually a couple of employees in district already that have licensure for this. And that kind of brought to light to me that in addition to the hiring conversations we've had over the last couple of months, we don't know who has what license. So it would be nice to get that sort of report from our HR department. And then the Agency of Education does provide a consulting role for this sort of thing. And as much as I may not agree with their recommendations, I really think we need to pause for a week, actually ask them about what services they provide for interim administration because we need to really think about the permanent candidates for these positions. And we just need somebody, we need to get through this while we find that perfect candidate. And if Andy Haas is that perfect candidate, that's great. I mean, I actually think Andy would be good in this role. But as a system, we need to consider the downstream implications of that and have mitigation plans before we move him into that.
Anything else, Jessa?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Deb?
Yes, my concerns have a lot to do with the hierarchical behavior I see here and it has been going on for many years when it comes to selecting someone to hire. I don't believe it's appropriate the way it was done. We are supposed to be boards doing our work in the public, not behind the scenes. Multiple emails and multiple phone calls creates a chain which is actually a violation of open meeting law, which everyone is well aware of. And yet, that seems to be what has happened. The boards haven't been brought the option of who was interested in this position, who we should look at. I'm not saying the person selected, the person you've selected isn't a bad, is not, isn't a good fit. I'm not saying that. I'm simply saying we continue to kill the process, which is what it was set up for. So everyone made the proper decision, messy and muddy and crappy though it is. We have to all do this independently as board, as individual boards, working as a body. I know that as an SU member, I didn't give David Clark or Jack Breyer permission to do the discussions that they had. I didn't do that. I don't believe that any of our boards did, board members necessarily did. The chairs need to know this stuff, but it doesn't mean that they're not supposed to be having these discussions with the body. The head is not the body. The body takes action. The head does not. And that's my problem here and I've seen it go on way too long. Not to mention, I would have to say one thing concerning the candidate that you've brought forth, which is that I've had a lot of calls since it got put on the agenda from poorly served parents of special needs children who have some great concerns about the way things are going already. They're greatly concerned if this person becomes an interim superintendent that things won't get better and things won't get fixed. But going back to my original concern about the topic is that boards take action in the light of day, not behind the scenes with chains of emails and multiple phone calls.
Thank you, Deb. Priscilla?
Do you want to throw others first?
Excuse me? Oh, is there any objection from the board to hear from Melissa Carlstrom?
I think that what I was going to say has already been said.
Oh. Priscilla, you're on.
I just feel that we owe our public the right to have a good search of what is quickly available here in our, at least in our district. And if we're asking the AOE, they might suggest somebody who I heard Jack say they don't always give us anything because it's what's left. But we don't know that without having looked and without having taken that time. And I know Jack sat there and said he'd sent them to board chairs. Well, I'm a board chair and I did not get all of those things. So I'm just telling you, I did not get all of those things. So I don't know. I didn't hear any of that. I just heard that things are going. I did have a phone call from you Thursday night and you did mention Andy and I said I hadn't thought of him and I would have to think about it. The next thing I know is on Friday night, I'm seeing it on the news on my TV. I was shocked to see it up there that the board was considering and given his name. I really think a better process would have been to, you know, consideration of an appointment of an interim superintendent and we could have had this discussion without having to have Andy be in the limelight. Because that really is not fair to him from one standpoint. But I do think we need time to look at it and time to determine if that's the best route, looking at what needs to be done for all of the other situations for our district.
Okay, I believe we still have a motion on the floor. Priscilla, could you repeat your motion, please?
Make a motion that we consult with the AOE as well as have the board interview any current employees in our districts who hold a qualifying superintendent license or are eligible to hold a license before making a decision that has so much impact on our children and families.
Cheryl, discussion.
Just to discuss the motion for a moment. I think the intention behind Priscilla's motion is outstanding. I think the timing is not. I think that it's incredibly important that we, that I don't vote tonight, but those of you who are voting members, I personally believe should vote to approve the interim role of Mr. Haas. And I say that for a variety of reasons. When we heard from the public a week ago tonight, one of the things people talked about was their concern about continuity, stability in this extraordinary time with COVID. I would make a comment about the reference to people screwing up. This is, this is just an amazing time. We're talking about physical health and well-being, social health and well-being, the impact of a pandemic. We have a superintendent who did a brilliant job for three years and has finally said, my body, my spirit can't take it anymore. I respect his choice to resign for these reasons. I support his choice with deep regret. I would say that we're very fortunate to have someone as competent and caring to step into this position as Mr. Haas is right now. An experienced administrator, a former principal at the high school and the elementary level and somebody really experienced with federal grants, which is one of those things looming over us. So this is only an interim role. Andy would be applying as would a host of others in this community. I hope we do what Priscilla has asked for, to look for other people, but not now. I believe it's the time for this board to take action, to decisively say to the public, we're going to keep the schools running and do what's best for kids and everybody else right now. And I believe the best move is to do it decisively now.
Jack Breyer?
People know that I'm friends with Chris Pratt. People, nobody who was here during our last executive board should have any illusions how upset I was at the course of events and his resignation. And no one should think that I approve of anyone, including myself, acting in a unilateral fashion. What we're talking about right now is not hiring a permanent director, a permanent superintendent. We're talking about somebody with the signatory authority to sign papers and to keep the ship running. That's what we're talking about. So let's be clear about that. This is, this is an interim acting capacity, but with enough authority so that paperwork can get processed. Now, we did make inquiries about other folks. Priscilla keeps on telling us she has a mystery list and she may, that's fine. But, but could I ask you?
But direct remarks to the chair, please.
Thank you, thank you. The point is, we need, we need someone to step in because right now, no one is at that desk. We need someone at that desk. We need someone that has expressed willingness to do it. We need someone who our current superintendent has confidence in. We have that. Now, I want to say that we do need a process for hiring a full-time permanent superintendent. We need to do that sooner rather than later. And I do think that we all understand, including Mr. Haas, that interim is not permanent and that we will do a search and we'll do a thorough one. But I want to make clear who has authority in this matter. And if you, the superintendents of this district have been hired by the executive board. That is the chairs of the individual boards. Right now, that chair, those chairs are, to my right, Molly Bannock. Me, to my left, David Clark. To my further left, Priscilla Lambert. When we hired Mr. Pratt, we expanded the discussion to include the whole board because we wanted their input. But the decision rests with the executive, with that executive committee. If boards have problems with their chairs or don't trust them to make good decisions, they should remove them forthwith. But part of the responsibility of chairs is that they are your executive committee. They make the hiring decision on your superintendent and assistant, or actual district superintendent. Thank you.
Priscilla, I'm going to ask you for a point of clarification here. Are we under a motion or are we under an amendment to a motion?
We're under a motion.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought.
Can I, can I speak to one thing? The point of order. What I do not understand, the exec committee has no authority whatsoever to make decisions, only bringing back to their own board. So I don't understand where Jack is coming from and saying that they decide who's hired. But also, a point of order on doing this. Andy cannot legally become superintendent because it violates the state Board of Education rules under 5220. Who needs to be licensed? He has another year to go before he is, can obtain a license. And we have not done the steps that would allow for that to be waived by the state. So we need to look at everybody else and if then we don't find somebody else, maybe then the state would approve it, but not at this point. And so it's kind of a moot point to be saying we want to put him in. That's not a legal thing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Andy, your query. You have had contact with AOE. What's their position with regards to your ability to be licensed?
So I reached out to the AOE to ask about provisional. The response I got back was that they asked me to apply for my full license that I had, the transcripts to, and schooling to meet those requirements, which I've already begun that process.
Okay, Priscilla, there's an answer. I'm going to, I see, I see a hand here. I see two hands up on the screen. Actually, three hands up on the screen. And Flora, I'm going to beg your indulgence here because I really would like to hear from board members and move to a vote on this motion. One more time, Jessa, please.
David, can I answer?
Hold on, hold on him here.
I will cede, I will cede some of my time to Priscilla and Flora. I do just want to point out to Jack that the executive committee may select the superintendent for hire, but it's the SU Board that votes to allow the superintendent to sign things on our behalf.
Correct. Okay, thank you. You wish to cede your time to Flora and to Priscilla, so.
I do.
Flora?
So I just want to, going with the careful, can I, or to just let the business office know what process they're going to have in place to give us the backup that we're going to need with Pratt. Right now, Joe and Andy is the only person that has the expertise with many of them. Grant, Grant's writing and blowing up on processes because he does already special ed. At this point in the business office, we have no one with the expertise of writing Grant, calling Andy. That is a big concern for me.
Thank you, Flora. Priscilla and then Deb Wright?
I got a different answer. When I reached out to them and they told me to look at the specific things under that were in licensure and I printed those out, which says that, you know, you have to have a qualified person. And since we have qualified people, they told me it was the same as when you're doing an educator's, a teacher's license. And in a teacher's license, I do know after 25 years in the school system and watching it happen several times, that in order for a teacher to get licensed, they have to have looked for that licensed person first. And we haven't, we haven't done that. That doesn't mean that Andy, if, if we've done that and the board chooses to select him, then we would all support that. But at this point, we need to look. And taking a few days to look is not going to make a difference. Our superintendent is still here to the 27th. He can sign off on anything that needs to be. A person who is not licensed has to function under that person anyway, under a licensed person anyway. And so right now, I think we need to take the time and look and see what's out there. Then if Andy's the best, we will know that. Right now, we're not given that chance as a board. And if the exec committee is deciding, the exec committee did not decide to bring him to the board. Okay? Because I told you, David, on Thursday night that I would have to think about it. And then on Friday night, I'm seeing it announced on the TV. And as one member of that exec committee, I was not asked if I wanted to bring him to the board. So that's, you know, that's really not what happened here.
Okay, Deb, and then I'm hopeful we can move to a vote.
Right. The last thing I would like to say is it's seriously erroneous to say that there's no one right now. one right now to sign documents. Number one, we have till the 27th with Chris Pratt. And number two, the assistant superintendent is available until October 1. So to say there's no one to sign anything right now is wrong, to say that. And I would like actually to call the vote, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I agree with Priscilla. At this point, we need to do the right thing and follow the process. Don't skip steps.
Priscilla Lambert, how do you vote?
On the motion, yes.
Yes, okay. Jason Terry, how do you vote?
Can I hear the motion one more time? About 13 minutes or so.
I make a motion that we consult with the AOE and as well as have the board interview any current employees in our districts who hold a qualifying superintendent's license or are eligible to be licensed before making a decision that has so much impact on our children and families.
Your vote, Jason?
No.
Okay. Jason Benson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Let me see here. I'm sorry, Deb Wright, how do you vote?
We're voting at Priscilla's motion, right? So yes.
Brenda, how do you vote?
No.
Jessa West Clark, how do you vote?
I vote yes on that motion.
Thank you. Lynn Morgan, how do you vote?
Abstain.
You abstain, okay. Jack Brier, how do you vote?
Regrettably, no.
No, okay. Have I missed anyone? I have one, two, three, four, five, yes. I have three no, one abstention. The chair has not voted, so the motion passes. Okay, that gets us down to director's comments. Okay, so let's see here. Lynn Morgan, would you like to start us off?
I think on this discussion, I would like to have had more information on interim, what the picture of interim is. Maybe we can get that.
We're under director's comments here, Jack. We'll get to you pretty quickly.
Let's get to you, David.
Oh, I'm sorry, Priscilla.
Point of order, right.
Thank you all for keeping track of me tonight. Dee, Priscilla, you requested action here tonight. It's going to be up to the board to decide whether they want to grant it, but would you please tell us what you would like action on?
Okay. One thing that happened today that we all need to be aware of, just in case there are not, is that the governor's conference, it was pointed out that we are kind of level at the amount of COVID that we're seeing. And they expected it to go down by seven to nine weeks. So it's not dropping yet. They are expecting, hopefully, that it will soon, but since it has not, they have asked all the boards to extend their ruling for masking in the schools at that first 10-day level through the end of September, with the idea that then they can have time to look at it again, you know, in the next days and see where they want to go. At the same time, we're looking at vaccination rates for our students. The Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union put in a mandate for their teachers and staff to have vaccinations. They have to have their first one by September 17th and their second one by September 29th. Although, probably not wanting to take action on that tonight because we'll need to reach out and find out more information. But, a lot of other districts are looking at vaccination or being tested once or twice a week. And I think that might be something that could be appropriate for our boards to be looking at and be considering, since it is such a tenuous issue out in the public and that would protect our children more. The second side of that, which is what we really need to look at tonight, is the vaccination of our children and getting to that 80%. The governor's conference is planning, according to them, to put in a grant that includes about $2 million for schools in our state. It will be divided on people who apply for it, the schools apply for it. It will be divided up based on our vaccination rates and the how many are in our schools. I think at this point, a lot of schools are gathering vaccination information by having the parents bring in the vaccination cards to their nurses so they can keep track. And I think it's important that we make sure that ours are doing it. We were given 10 days originally to start doing that, and I don't know if our nurses are doing that. So what I wanted to bring to the board was whether you want to take action tonight or whether you just want to discuss the possibility of that. You know, it's not my right to decide. But I wanted you aware that that's going on and that, you know, it might be a need.
What's the board's pleasure? Jack Brier?
Mr. Chair, I move that, following the discussions at the state level, that all mask mandates be continued until the end of September, at which point, our boards may act as they see fit as to what additional steps may be taken. And that we continue to strongly encourage vaccination where possible, including all staff.
Now, the chair's going to do two things. Chair is first going to overrule Mr. Brier's motion as being an unworn item. The second thing the board is, the chair is going to do is ask the board who wishes to override. Jack Brier, do you wish to override the chair's ruling?
I do, and I want to explain. Per Robert's rules, an unworn item cannot be binding until it is confirmed by a subsequent meeting of the body. But that does give notice to boards and to this body are intent, because 10 days are going to run out. And this is a way of putting something in place until we meet again. So I would ask?
You've got it. You've made your, you've got it. Okay. Brenda Farkas, how do you vote? This is to overrule the chair's ruling that we're not taking action. And an overrule would allow this board to take action. Jack's motion?
A point of order, David. His motion is not applicable to the other boards.
Well, you're absolutely correct, Priscilla, and I hope you'll make that point when, if we get into discussion here. Brenda, how do you vote?
Tell me when I'm voting again.
Okay. Jack Brier has put a motion on the floor to continue the mask mandate in the schools, bearing in mind that the Supervisory Union Board cannot bind the local entity, so it would strictly be our people, if you will. But his motion is to continue the mask mandate through the end of September. And I have said that this motion is out of order, but if you would like to consider it, then you would need to vote yes in order to consider it, or you would vote no to sustain the chair's ruling.
No.
No. Lynn, how do you vote?
I'm going to abstain again.
You're going to abstain, okay, it's fine. Just keep track. The voting members over here. Jason Terry, how do you vote? Do you vote to sustain the chair's ruling or do you wish to override and consider the question?
No. What Brenda?
Brenda voted no, so Jason Terry is a no. You would be voting to override the chair?
I don't think we have the right to do the motion as it was, so I would sustain you, but not for the reasons that you're saying.
Priscilla is a yes to override. Deb Wright?
Not override you.
She is voting with you to support.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
I am voting with you, David, that the motion should not be, that is not appropriate, not for the reasons you gave, but because it's not an appropriate motion.
So you're voting not to override, is that correct?
Yes.
Jessa West Clark, how do you vote?
Regarding Jack's far too permissively worded motion, I vote no.
You put it like that.
Jason Terry voted no. Jason Benson, how do you vote?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, the motion's been withdrawn, Priscilla. We're back to your motion.
I didn't have a motion, but that's okay.
I thought you had a motion. Am I mistaken?
She was just reading the news.
I just gave, I provided you the information because I wasn't sure how my word felt.
Is it the board's desire to act on it tonight? Jack Brier did put a motion on the floor, which I believe was relevant.
I might like to put a motion on the floor, then they can decide. I'll put a motion on the floor. I would put a motion on the floor that we make sure, and they may be doing that, that we make sure that the nurses are collecting the actual vaccination.
Arts?
Can I help you with the motion just a little bit, Priscilla?
Please help.
And my suggestion would be that you ask for a report from the nurses by date certain.
Okay. I would say that we should ask for a report on the percentages of vaccinations that they have collected from the students so that we will know where we stand on trying to get this 80% in our schools.
Next meeting of this board?
At the next meeting of this board.
Okay, we have a motion. Does everyone have that motion? Discussion?
We're supposed to have it by 10 days, according to the old one, but by the new one, it's by the end of September, so you're fine.
And I have a hand there. Deb?
I know we passed over the whole thing, but in reality, the board, once putting an agenda item on the agenda at the meeting, can take action. However, according to the state, they are required to ratify the vote at the next meeting, which would be the 22nd. So if there wasn't a reasonable, a reasonable motion, which apparently people did not think that Jack's was made, it could be taken with ratifications, the same as what she is, Priscilla's doing now, will have to be ratified at the 22nd. Can't take action without ratifying it at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Deb. Jessa?
Hi, I'm speaking to the chair but directing my comments at Priscilla. Looking at more information from our school nurse regarding verification of vaccine status. Right now, the entire school system is still begging parents to return all sorts of paperwork. We have parents that they are still asking to return paperwork regarding the details of their children's serious medical conditions. I really think we need to give them more time. Just today, they put out a plea for medical forms because those aren't being returned, and they want those even ahead of vaccine information. So I would really like to just give the school nurses more time to do their jobs and maybe revisit it closer to the end of the month at our next meeting.
Further discussion under the motion. Jason Terry?
Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chair, but I think we already directed the nurses to give us data at the high school in Rockingham. So are we now saying the data that they already haven't given us, we're going to give them a further extension?
That's what we're saying.
The motion, I believe, the motion, I believe, and I'll get you in just a moment, Molly, was to have the nurses report back data at the next meeting of the Supervisory Union Board, bearing in mind, once again, that the SU board cannot bind the local boards to an action. So, Molly?
So my understanding is that, like on our next high school board meeting, we talked about it on our last board meeting, was that that was going to, we were going to get a report from our principal on how the nurse was doing on collecting this data and percentages of who was vaccinated and reconsider whatever the CDC's rules are on masking. I understand what you're trying to do, Priscilla, but I think, I feel like the high school board is already doing that.
Can I ask Jason a question? Jason, you felt we had done that too? I didn't.
Yeah, that was.
Did I miss that?
Well, I have our motion, but we did, we did talk about, at the next meeting, they would have numbers for the middle school. We already know what the central school is going to be. The central school is going to be zero vaccination.
Right.
But we did ask for that, and I don't, I don't see the point of, I think we need to see the number first, and then we can kind of pivot to where we're going to go. By giving them a couple more weeks, who knows? We could already be at 80%, 90%, and we could be at 10. I don't know, I don't know. So I think what we're going, trying to, what we're doing at the high school, I think, is, to me, is common sense, but I don't see it changing though. I don't personally believe.
Priscilla, and then Jack?
David, I'm taking from what Molly's saying, I must have missed the fact that the nurses were supposed to be taking vaccine information from their, from their vaccine cards. I missed that for some reason. And Jason is also saying that we kind of did that as far as our discussion, and a discussion can be, can be kind of direction when it's a small board like that. So I think maybe it would be better just, if I just withdrew the motion at this point. If we're already doing that, that's great.
Well, the motion is withdrawn.
Do we want to look at, though, the other side of it, as far as, does this board want to start thinking at least about the possibly mandating vaccines and testing? At least have a discussion. I'm not saying make a motion at this point, but we probably all have our own ideas, David.
Well, Priscilla, I guess what I'm going to ask you is whether you are looking for just a general discussion of how the board feels about that. I have a suspicion it could get kind of lengthy, because I believe that we have several different viewpoints represented at the table tonight. But if that's the board's wish, we can do that. And it would be a discussion of whether the Supervisory Union Board would create a vaccine mandate for its employees and recommend that the member boards consider doing the same. Is that what you basically are asking here?
That's what I'm asking. I want to find out how board members feel about that. Because as a board chair, I kind of want to know what the other boards are thinking, as well as, you know, I think my members would like to as well.
Well, Priscilla, tell us what you're thinking. I'll just go around the table.
Sounds good. You want me to say?
Sure.
I kind of would like to see something in place. I think it's becoming more prevalent. The governor extended the vaccination requirement today to some of the state employees. And so, it may be coming down the pipe here anyway that he does, because school employees are state employees. We're public, public people. That's what all state employee, all public schools are. So it could be ending up that if it doesn't start getting better, that he could mandate it. But that doesn't require a person to get a vaccine, but it does say, okay, if you're not going to, we want to know that you don't have it, you're not spreading it. And I know my daughter's work, they do twice a week at hers. And some places do twice a week, some do once a week. We do have surveillance coming into the schools where it's convenient and right there. Also, we have a vaccine clinic on Friday here at high school. Go ahead.
Jason Terry?
I have no comment at this time at this matter.
Cheryl Charles?
I don't have a comment either right now.
Deb Wright?
I have a comment. I brought this up before. I think it's essential for the health of our school system that all teachers and staff either become vaccinated and prove such, or they can be tested once or twice a week. Other schools are doing that, and it seems an essential thing to bring down COVID, at least in the adult population, and will do what they can to protect children in our school system. I think it's very important. It also sets an example, which I think, again, is another important and essential need. We set an example for all students that our teachers and staff are all getting vaccinated, unless they feel like getting tested a couple times a week. I believe, I was ready to. I believe, I was ready to go and take action on that tonight with a ratification at the next meeting, but I would be, since we have to wear masks till the end of the month, and maybe even October 4th, according to the governor, um, she said today, I'm fine with waiting until the 22nd, but I would absolutely like this an action item on the agenda for the 22nd. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Uh, Jessa West Clark.
I find myself agreeing with Deb Wright. Um, I don't think tonight is the time to take any action on this, and I also think this involves coordination with local boards. We cannot have different standards for SU employees and local employees in the same building. I don't wanna rush this through tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Jessa. Uh, Jason Benson.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo Jessa and Deb both on this. I think it's something that needs to be done, and it's something that we need to apply at our local levels and SU as a whole, so that we're not playing different games with different people, and everybody's on the same page, and that everything works out. That's all.
All right. Molly Bannack.
No comment.
Lynn Morgan.
I thought we discussed this at a previous meeting, and we voted as a board to turn it over to the, um...
Negotiations.
What's the word I'm looking for?
We did, but the negotiations committee was one.
Right. Negotiation. Negotiation committee, thank you. To determine whether they needed to be vaccinated or not. So if we've done that, do we renege on that, do it again? Uh, what is the call?
Okay, thanks, Lynn. Brenda.
Um, I remember what Lynn has just, um, mentioned, that we did do that at a previous board meeting. I believe the teachers' unions have a lot to say about that. I don't know which teacher union. So that would be in negotiations because of the employees that are associated with that. Um, no action.
Okay. Jack.
Uh, Lynn took the words out of my mouth. I, I'm feeling a little, this is slightly redundant, but not entirely. Uh, we did empower the negotiations, uh, committee to, to, uh, with a directive that this should be part of, uh, of negotiations and should be a requirement as part of, that this was, to be understood, and we, I, I took it as an understanding that we try to get interim agreement from the, from our folks at the NEA. Now, the NEA is not all employees, so, uh, Priscilla's motion is broader than that, but it is worth mentioning that the American Federation of Teachers has come out in favor of, of both masking and vaccinations. Uh, the, the national, the NEA itself is kind of wobbled all over the place and not, uh, not come to, uh, any such determination, but I believe is left into their locals. Uh, and, uh, I think that if we wanna just impose it, we certainly have the right to do it, but I would rather negotiate it out if we can. Solid on that.
Okay, thanks. Um, Melissa.
Um, I just wanted to speak, 'cause my viewpoint's a little different than other people's, and that's that, as a teacher myself, I'm not required to be vaccinated, but I thought about it, and I had made the decision that if it was mandated to do either the testing or the vaccination, that I would quit my job, because I don't think anyone has the right to tell anybody else what to do with their body. Now, if we were to do this, which I understand that we can, we're in a staffing crisis across the U.S., and Vermont is not in a position where our COVID rates are high enough, where we need to push people's boundaries and their sense of personal power, is my input.
Thanks, Melissa. Anyone else? Um, would, would you?
I'm open to a question.
Okay. Um, Melissa's open to a question, uh, Jessa, and we'd kinda like to push this along. We do have a couple of executive assessment items. Ask your question, please, Priscilla.
Um, Melissa, with, with, I mean, the other SU that I spoke about is mandating, and they have no choice whatsoever. It's, it's vaccine or, or get done. Um, and ours was do one or the other, and that's common for employers throughout a lot of places right now. My son had to go back to work last week. He had to get tested, and I knew there wasn't probably any chance whatsoever, but, and he, he is vaccinated.
I'm aware.
But he still had to get it.
Of what you're communicating, and I know that a lot of places have chosen to do that, and I would not want an invasive medical anything that was unnecessary for my body.
Okay, thank you. Uh, question asked, question answered. Uh, Jessa, I am going to see, um, my comment to you, because I think we're at a point where we kinda have a general sense of the room. Go ahead. And actually, make it brief, and I'll give Deb the other half of my comment.
I will attempt to. Um, I really don't think we should be voting on this tonight, although not for the reasons people might think. I am one of the few school board members who is also a member of the NEA, um, because we don't allow teachers in our district to be on boards. I'm a member of the NEA through the Massachusetts Teachers Association, and we had to beg the governor for the masks mandate. Uh, we pushed for a vaccine mandate, uh, with the full support of the NEA. Our employees had six days to get their first shot after that passed. Um, we had no problems getting the administration to sign off on the union side letter, which I will happily provide to anybody if they wanna see the language for it. I'm fine with that. Um, I'm still getting tested once a week. Uh, people with medical exemptions only have the option to still continue working while wearing an N90 fast, N95 mask with no exemption and submit to twice weekly testing. Everyone else, um, if they refuse to get vaccinated, had, was put on paid leave for up to one year, and then they will be let go. I'm fine with that, and if we wanna go that way, that's fine, because I also have serious concerns about people who do not believe in science directing the education of our children.
Okay, Jessa, thank you. Deb.
Two quick pieces. Number one, as the chair of the negotiating committee, I do not believe this is a negotiating point. I believe it is a policy, and that's a policy of the district that needs to be set. Um, so I can tell Mr. Breyer through, through Mr. Clark that I would not push that piece on the CBAs. That's one. Number two, that piece is that the CBA for the teachers will be done before the T, CBA for the staff, and you're asking to put that in there. So that means that's not even balanced, there's no protocol to make sure that it all gets done. And lastly, as far as a teacher telling us that everybody, that she'll quit and other people will quit is inappropriate, number one. And number two, you're busy pushing your agendas and your needs to vax to every child in the school system and throughout the country. However, you have no intention of doing so yourself. Um, if you don't want the vaccine, fine, some people don't. I wasn't going to get it, 'cause I thought everybody was gonna turn into a walking zombie, but I finally took the vax. Um, however, I have other family members who have not, and that's their choice, and if the choice is vax or stick up your nose, well, then stick up it, no, your nose it is, and I think that's important to prove to our children, and again, I agree with Jessica West Clark. If they don't believe in science, then I have a problem with them teaching our children. Thank you.
Okay. Communication, public comment. Lynn Morgan. Nothing, Lynn? Uh, Brenda?
Is this director's comment?
We're under director's comment.
Okay. Sorry. My director's comment is back to, um, the, um, problem with the superintendent's interims.
I can't hear her.
Sure that the cameraman can, uh, pick you up clearly, Brenda.
All right. So my director's comments were gonna be according to the, uh, the agenda for the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. Typically, when there's a superintendent or an assist, there's an assistant to anything, the assistant steps up when the other one goes away, and I realize that there's some kind of, um, thing going on that, that she's not comfortable to do then, because she's already submitted her resignation. But when that happens, then there has to be another, we have no policy, I guess, for that. In most companies, they do post something, and then they give so much of a time, and then people within the company can go ahead and, and, and make application, and there it goes before. But I also heard the superintendent, who was leaving for personal and medical reasons, and so therefore he was leaving more abruptly, I suppose, because as a board member, I was not privy to any of this information. I did not receive phone calls, and there was a couple emails that were mentioned that I'm not sure that I got to read. I did receive an after the executive meeting stuff, but as the superintendent, knowing that his assistant superintendent was not going to step up to the plate, then I do respect the fact that he had a recommendation that he would work with, but I just think this whole thing, it would be nice, like, uh, someone else said, I believe it was Molly, even about exit interviews, it would be nice if we would have, we seem to be missing policies and protocols or something, because that seems to be the hole that goes on with some of the things that've happened recently. Um, so anyways, I was very conflicted on the whole agenda, because I was actually agreeing with Priscilla at some point, and then I was agreeing with somebody else at some point, and I was wanting to support the superintendent because I felt like he had done a job that was incredible for three years with the stuff that was going on. And so, no easy answer, but, but, um, the fact that it's interim, I think that, like, there's a definition to the protocols, and I think that all of those things combined are, are, and the public obviously feels very passionate about it as well. So I believe going forward as boards, we can maybe make that observe if it happens again.
Thank you, Brenda. Jack.
A couple of quick points. Um, the basis for my original motion about the, about masking, et cetera, was because we have a, it sounded like a recommendation from the state to extend that masking for 30 days. Now, had we, uh, we all ended up passing somewhat different policies at different boards, and most of them referred to the 10 days, and that, and which ends the 18th, and wanted to have something in place to get us over the hump to the end of the month. I, 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 I didn't know when we were gonna meet again. The, the, the other item was that, uh, I owe an apology to my own board members, because in the process of calling up all of the board chairs to make sure they're in the loop, and so that they could tell their boards, uh, the point board that didn't get, uh, brought into the loop very well, was my own. I did ask all my board members to come so that everybody could get the same information at the same time. Now, everyone has to realize, all this started over a holiday weekend, and trying to get people in a room or have any sort of discussion seemed hard. We, I originally was going to schedule tomorrow night, um, to discuss all this, but it seemed smarter to have everybody here to discuss it, and I appreciate, um, my own, uh, members being here, because, uh, that's the reason why you're hearing it tonight, is because it was a first opportunity, and I apologize for that, but, uh, I do think it's important that we did try our best to keep, uh, members of the executive committee at least informed as best we could. Uh, it was a rough process, but it seemed the only one that we had available to us.
Okay. Priscilla.
I feel that tonight we were allowed to be a board and function as a board. We discuss things, we voted on things. We were out in, in the public, and we, we were seen, and the public was informed, as rightly so. We, we should be doing that to our employees. I hope that we've learned, 'cause I, over the last 10 days, have been really surprised, and just kinda hit in the face several times with information that I wasn't aware of and that other people were talking about, and I just think we need to remember that, that we need to function as a board. David, I really appreciate your letting us function as a board tonight, and I felt that we did better tonight than what we've been doing for the last couple weeks, so thank you for that. I also want to say that one thing they brought up in the governor's conference today, that really I am so pleased with, and I hope it goes on, because it would break my heart if something happened to someone that was under 20, but they said, "We have not lost in Vermont one person under 20." And that is a really big feat, to be able to say that across our country. So we just need to be sure that we're moving forward and being careful, and I just appreciate, I know I appreciate the schools in my school district, and how well they are doing and caring for their children. Thank you.
Thanks, Priscilla. Jason Terry.
Thank you, David. So, this is a wonderful, confusing time that we all live in, and, uh, you know, uh, Melissa, I, I, my choice was to get vaccinated, and, uh, I totally will respect your body, your choice. I think that's important. Um, you know, around the whole, uh, Mr. Haas, uh, discussion, I would be a hypocrite if I did not agree with Priscilla, and we need to interview the best candidate possible, whether Andy's interim or not, because I, for one, know that they, as little as it sounds, and as minute as it sounds, they didn't do that around basketball. They chose the coach that they wanted. They did not interview all the best candidates. So I think, you know, I think that's important to, to know, um, and I wish you, I wish you well. Um, and one thing that we're not talking about today, and David, please bear my indulgence, um, you know, we're, we're coming up on a 20-year anniversary, um, and, uh, we as Americans watched in horror as the terrorist attacks on 9/11, 2020, uh, 2001 unfolded. The profound impact of 9/11 attack was unforgettable. I'm sure everyone, just like me, remembers where you were, what you were doing. I remember how shaken we all were, and how we all came together in a spirit of sadness and strength of patriotism. We said we would never take our freedoms for granted. We live in this great, in the greatest country in the world, and we are forgetting our freedoms we fought for because of mandates and requirements. Benjamin Franklin very profoundly said, "Those who are willing to give up a little freedom for security get neither." Every day should feel like September 12th, and how we all felt towards each other as a country. We all look past our differences, because on that day, we're all Americans and nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Cheryl.[1687.87]
This board took action tonight to accept the resignation of Superintendent Chris Pratt, and I believe that was done with regret, with sadness, and with real respect for his service and accomplishments. I just want to assure the public, who expressed such dismay at Chris's leaving, I believe this was well considered on Chris's part, and that really we ought to respect his personal choice, for his own health and other personal reasons to have made this choice. I wish him the best, I hope he bounces back, gets really healthy soon, and is able to serve another district well. With Dr. Carey, that action has not been, her resignation hasn't been accepted yet. I would say that I particularly commend Dr. Carey's work with the grants, and the significant accomplishments she has brought to this district in that area. So I wish them both well, and look forward to what our next leadership phase will be in.
Thank you Cheryl. Did I get to you Molly?
My mom.
Okay, all right.
Um, you, okay, I'm, I just didn't want to butt in line. I, I also would like to wish Mr. Pratt the, the best of everything. I think he did this district well for three years. Sad to, to see, to see anybody with that kind of qualities leave our district in a short amount of time, but I wish him all the luck in the world. I do think that this is, has been a better meeting than, than we've had in the past. I do think that one of the things that I have had to work towards as an adult, as probably a controller as bad as David Clark, is to just not overtalk people. So I hope that we all can do that as a board, and wait your turn, and, and as we work together, you know, if somebody is a little more quieter than the other one, the guy beside you is going to say, "She's had her hand up three times." But I hope that we can learn from what has been going on, and not to try to speak louder than our, the person beside us, because we think that's how we get heard the best. I, as an adult, as a manager, I've had to learn how to do that. So I'm as much fault as others in the past, but I've tried to control myself better. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a clarification. Elise, are you, are you in elementary, or are you Westminster board?
Westminster, well, the...
You're in elementary.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I'm sorry, I did not realize that. Elise, it's your turn.
Oh, the only thing I had my hand up about was just the October 4th date, was what the, the governor had recommended for continued masking, so, otherwise...
Okay. Thank you. Melissa, I'm not certain, did you get your director's comment?
I'm past.
Right? Jason Benson?
I'm all set.
Jessa West Clark?
Um, I just wanted to say that Jason Terry had a nice statement he made, and I agree with some of the things Molly said, and I've noticed over the last couple years, both in the school system here and my position on the board, and both at my place of employment as well, people are so unwilling to have difficult conversations, and people are, are very unwilling to engage with people that they think are wrong, or that they just don't want to have conflict with. I talked to Priscilla for a long time today, and Priscilla and I, we have been very vocal saying out loud that the other person is wrong, and we're fine with that, because we're adults, and we're working for a common goal, to make all of this better. And I think a big portion of everything that precipitated the events of the meeting tonight is related to the lack of open, honest communication, and the willingness to have difficult conversations with each other. From the administrator down to the paras and the maintenance staff, everybody, we need to find a way to open up communication and keep everything transparent and honest, and I really think that will do us so much better in the future than it has over the last little while, because most of this could have been averted, or at least made better by just open, honest communication. And I really hope we work on that as a board and as an SU school system.
Thank you Jessa. Deb?
I think I've spoken quite a bit tonight, I've been pretty upfront, and I have, I never have any problem engaging in anything less inflammatory. I don't think there's any conversation, I don't think there's any subject about which we cannot discuss if we're adults, and we don't have to agree, but dialoguing is important to get all of it out there, not just some people's opinion, with everyone else sitting back and nodding their head. I agree with Jessa, and I've said enough, and thank you.
Thanks Deb. I wrote a letter.
Jason Benson.
Jason Benson's been heard from, Priscilla, I believe. Am I mistaken, Jason?
Yes, I did.
I wrote a letter, says, "To whom it may concern, my board service goes back to the late 1980s. During that time, I've worked with eight superintendents of school, and after three years of working closely with Chris Pratt, I still think he's the best one I've served with. During final interviews, it came across very clearly that Chris had direct experience in essentially all the roles a school leader needs to have expertise in, in order to be an effective school leader. But more to the point bluntly, when we hired him, I really thought he was an Ed visionary, and after all this time, I still think he's an Ed visionary. To put it as simply as possible, he was, in my judgment, the right guy at the right time. I'm quite sure you all have your own stories of just how difficult the COVID pandemic has been for your schools. I can assure you that the schools in Windham Northeast were and are no different. But what may have been different for us is that we had a superintendent of schools who did everything in his power to meet the challenge of keeping the schools running in the hybrid model when we were able to, and as effectively as possible when we had only a matter of days to make the pivot to full remote learning. This has been deeply exhausting work, and we are now reaping the whirlwinds from it. Eventually, the crazy hours expended to get ready to address learning loss, staffing shortages, and the unprecedented largesse that the SFR funds represented, fed up with us. Only Chris bore the brunt of it. On several occasions over the summer, I asked him to step away from it at least for a long weekend, but his response to me was he could wait until the schools were open, and here we are. I think Chris Pratt would be a tremendous asset to your school district. His high regard and empathy for kids and staff are without parallel. In fact, if I were to attribute one failing to him, it would simply be his ability to stay on top of all the operational matters flung his way. Looking back over his tenure, I think the job was just too big for one person, and if we'd adequately staffed him with a couple of operationally qualified people who really had his back, you wouldn't be looking at the opportunity now. Please give Chris serious consideration, because wherever he goes next, that school or school district will be hiring a consummate professional. Now, some additional news, and that is this. Jessa and Priscilla are going to be very busy over the next few days, because that's the last time you're going to hear from me under director's comments. I am going to redirect my time to pay more attention to the HVAC situation at the high school. Good luck to you at this table, I wish you well. Looking for me? Look for me at the high school. Okay, so I'm all, I'm all done with this responsibility. It's time to pass the mantle. We have two items here for executive session. One's a personnel matter, which is a discussion with Lynn Carey, and the other is a legal matter, which involves a proposed settlement of a small sum with a former employee. And I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. I think it would be necessary to invite our technician Ricky Adams to attend, but I don't think we'll be unduly prejudiced by that. Okay, so motion to go into executive session, please, for personnel and legal matter.
This would be a motion to go into executive session for personnel matter, and what was the other thing?
That's a legal matter, for both settlement.
And a legal matter, and to invite all board, all board members of all boards who are present or are online to join us.
Do we say invite administrators, Jeff?
Um, well, we've certainly invited, yes, if they would like to attend.
Okay. Deb Wright?
Aye.
Uh, Jessa West Clark?
Aye.
Jason Benson?
Yes.
Um, Jason Terry?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jack Breyer?
Uh, yeah.
Brenda?
Yes.
Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, we are in.